All right. Good evening. It's September eighteenth at six oh two P M and I'm gonna call the Curriculum Committee, Curriculum Subcommittee to order for the Groton Public Schools. In attendance, Board members, we have Mike Whitney, Dr. Andrea Ackerman and myself, Adrian Johnson. And we also have Anne Marine, Anne, sorry, Anne Marie Mancini, the Assistant Superintendent, and staff members Christopher Morse, Kathy Wilson, and Jess Duncan. And I think I've got everybody. So the first order of business is to review the meeting minutes. Does anyone have any comments on the minutes? Andrew or Mike? All right. I'm not sure if we're actually supposed to vote on them or not, but I guess, I guess if they're no, Mike, do you know, I've been seeing that we haven't been voting on them in the regular meetings now.
Yes, it there, it makes us feel good, I guess, but it sounds like we don't actually have to. You can just accept the meeting minutes.
All right, so we'll just, we'll just accept the meeting minutes as posted. And the next order, or the next item on the agenda is a review of the M Y P Personal Project. And I, I'm excited to hear about it and what we do. So I don't know who wants to start off explaining what the project is and when it happens and all that.
Yes, so thank you, Chair Johnson. I'm gonna, if you don't mind, I'm gonna share my screen. I'm gonna do a little presentation and then actually, everyone, all of the staff members that are here are gonna take part in this presentation, but I'll, I'll be starting if you don't mind.
Sure, yeah, that's great.
Great, thank you. So I'm gonna share here. Actually, before I do that, I have to, I have to do a couple of things first, so I'm gonna set up my slideshow. Okay. Can everyone see this? No.
Not yet.
Not yet, okay. Let me do this. Just one second. Okay, great. Thank you for your patience. All right, so I'm gonna talk a little bit. I'm gonna start off by talking a little bit about the personal project tonight. And as I said, our staff members who are joining us here tonight, which Kathy Wilson, Chris North, and Jess Dunnekin will all be contributing to this presentation. So I first wanted to start off by giving a little background in history specific to the, not necessarily the personal project, but just secondary school reform and the, what is the evolution of what was originally called the Senior Demonstration Project, that eventually evolved into what was called the Capstone Project. So in two thousand seven, which was quite a long time ago, then Commissioner, his name was Mark McQuillan, began work on secondary school reform with the State Board of Education, the P sixteen Council, and an ad hoc committee. And as a part of this work, the committee recommended changes related to graduation requirements, starting with the class of two thousand, at that point, it was supposed to begin with a class of two thousand thirteen and beyond, which would have given it, you know, a good number of years for all these changes to kind of be put into place. There was a heavy emphasis on twenty-first century skills. And again, the, the title of this at the, at the time was referred to as the Senior Demonstration Project. And this was supposed to really emphasize not only twenty-first century skills, but exposure to career pathways. That's something that here in Groton, we talked quite a bit about. Development of student success plans, which I think, you know, a lot of schools put into place. And that's when the requirement of twenty-five credits for graduation was first put into place. Now, at the time, school districts were given a number of years to put those twenty-five credits into place. And I think most districts did that incrementally. You can see on the right-hand side of the screen, there was a graphic that was created. And where it says that circle where it says engagement, that's where this kind of the, the Senior Demonstration Project was supposed to kind of fit in under that circle. And the rationale, there was several, I guess, points of rationale that were given for the need for secondary school reform. First, there was a large achievement gap in Connecticut. And they thought that the secondary school reform would address, you know, the achievement gap. There was also declining performance on standardized tests. The NAEP, at the time, we also were given CAPT and C M T. It's funny, I was just reading an article before we got on about declining scores on the NAEP. You know, we're talking about that today. They, they talked about declining scores on the NAEP began in back in two thousand, a really major decline back in two thousand thirteen. So I guess they started to wanted, they wanted to start getting ahead of this in, back in two thousand seven. A number of students were, at the time, were, were required to enroll in remedial level college courses. Now we're still hearing about that today. There was a low economic value of the high school diploma. You know, for those students who were only earning the high school diploma, that, that's still obviously very true today. We were talking at the time about underpreparedness of high school graduates for the workplace. And then a large percentage of students aged sixteen through eighteen entering adult education. The original design or the intent of this kind of senior capstone, or the senior project demonstration, the, the original language that was requiring a capstone experience for every student, again, under that engagement circle or within that engagement circle. And then the original design of the project required students to integrate many of the essential skills acquired over a student's seven-year history between middle and high school. And students were able to have many choices for completing this experience. They could develop a portfolio, complete a set of experiments, for example, or organize it around, you know, set of scientific problems, do community service work, or work as an intern in a local business. And you see that several elements of, of this original design still exist today. For example, our students could, they could work, you know, participate in the military experience, for example, and that counts, that could count toward the requirement. I happen to serve on the original State Department of Education Capstone Committee. And you can see some of the language here. I won't read it to you, but I highlighted some of the very specific language that is, was in the original handbook that was provided to districts. You can see self-directed culminating project based on students' personal interests, in which students have to demonstrate core values and skills, apply knowledge and apply their knowledge. Students, or I'm sorry, school districts were given flexibility within the capstone, within the school district's mission. And it would apply, students will be able to earn credit toward high school graduations. So I wanted to kind of point out some key language from the original handbook that was distributed to school districts. They also, in the handbook, it also emphasized five core elements that it wanted all school districts to implement as it was kind of implementing this requirement. Number one was choice, providing opportunities for choice and self-direction for students. This twenty-first century skill development, very big at the time in secondary school reform. Also emphasizing process, you know, making sure that students had included, this project included research, self-reflection, and a self-evaluation component. Obviously, the product was really important, allowing students to demonstrate their learning in a variety of ways, but including a proposal, journal, or a process log, there being an, an end product, a, a presentation, and a reflection of some kind. And then he has an evaluation of some type, but it could be a self-evaluation. And then finally, some type of organization, organizational structure. The big piece of this, though, where it got difficult, was this was an unfunded state mandate. So there was no money that was given to the school districts to implement this. And how that, how that kind of, what the result of that was, is that there was no money given to schools, you know, many schools needed additional staff, like how would, you know, who was gonna teach this, who we're gonna work with the students on this to provide them with either instruction or as advisors? Who was gonna grade the projects? If they were gonna be graded? And then how was credit gonna be awarded? And so the State Department of Ed had to give the school districts a lot of flexibility. So for example, there was, you do not have to, like in a, in a traditional class, you know, there's a Carnegie unit, like for, when normally when you give credit for a course, students have to be, there's like seat time that must be associated with a credit. You have to be, traditionally, you think of like ninety hours is equal to a credit. In this case, the State Department and continues to, to say, you know, there does not have to be seat time associated with earning a credit related to the capstone requirement. Students do not have to earn a, a traditional grade. You know, with this assignment, they might be graded like according to a rubric, but they might not, it might be related to like, like expectations, the school's expectations for student learning, or it might be scored according to an I B rubric. But they don't have to have like a traditional grade like A, B, C. Or students might be self-assessed on a project like this. They might, the other thing I might, I wanna say is, they might not take or complete this project as a part of a regular course. Students might be completing this project independently, rather than, again, it might not be tied, like normally when you complete a project, it's part of a, a traditional course. So one of, the other things I wanna talk about is secondary school reform and how the capstone requirement like evolved over time. So in two thousand ten, this legislation was, was passed, which increased the graduation requirements from twenty to twenty-five. And that's how kind of the capstone requirement came into play. It was part of that. The increase from twenty to twenty-five. And it was supposed to begin originally with the class of two thousand eighteen. Well, unfortunately, this increase in graduation requirements was delayed for a number of years. So in two thousand fifteen, again, the requirements were delayed again as a part of legislation, and it became applicable for the class of two thousand twenty-one. Then in two thousand seventeen, the requirements were delayed another two years. And it was associated with the class of two thousand twenty-three. So if you were an educator like me at the time, and I was working with high school students, I kept thinking, you know, and at the time I was working with this, well, now, at this point, I was with two different school districts that had this in place. We kept thinking, when is this gonna be implemented officially with the classes that we were working with? And finally, in two thousand twenty-three, the, even though the, the credit requirements had been put into place, the, they were quickly rescinded, or the capstone piece. So the credit requirements were increased to twenty-five credits, and then the capstone piece was quickly made optional for school districts. So as you can tell, there was a lot of movement and delays associated with secondary school reform. And even once secondary school reform became officially implemented for all school districts, the, the State Department of Ed quickly took back what, what they said was important about specifically to the capstone. Now, capstone is technically still a requirement for those classes of the class of, until the class of two thousand twenty-seven. So our current, I guess you would say, this year would be the class of two thousand twenty-six. So our current seniors and juniors must complete this requirement. But after that, it would be optional for school districts to keep in place. At this point, I'm gonna turn the slides over to Kathy Wilson, who's gonna talk specifically about the I Bs, M, M Y P Personal Project. Kathy?
Thank you. So the personal project is a culmination of five years of the Middle Years Program. Middle Years Program starts in sixth grade and ends in tenth grade. But the, the great thing about it is that it is a project where the kids get to select a personal interest. Say, if they're really into music, or if they're really into sports, or they're into writing a book, or there's just drama, there's just something that they have this drive to do. And they need to do the research, they need to do, communicate with people that will help them, mentors. They, it, it takes a lot. It's, it's a very adult kind of thing. It's very rigorous because if you, if there's something that you want, you have a lot of learning to do. And, you know, and they need to research and do all that work. And so it, the, the culmination is of five different categories of approaches to learning that the M Y P promotes. So communication is a big one. So I G C'd my own home renovation, so I had to communicate with a bunch of people. So we also had a student that did the same thing with his parents' kitchen renovation. He went out and did all the research on having his parents' kitchen renovated, and I, I witnessed this at the exhibition that Jess and Chris put together last year. And then he had to research how this renovation is gonna take place. He had to do the budget for it. He had to manage his time because he's all on his own for this project, although he probably did communicate with his parents a lot. But then, then he had to use critical thinking skills, like, geez, my parents only have this much money. They wanna do the kitchen. You know, it was just very, it was one of the projects that really stood out to me when I went to the exhibition. And it is long-term, and it brings a lot of things together for a student who is, you know, maybe not, maybe a student who's not really great at memorizing and answering questions. They actually use the skills that they've learned from sixth through tenth grade to create a project. So it's, to me, like the really, the essence of learning, you're learning how to learn with the I B. Got another slide there, and the next one? So what we really wanna do is create, make the M Y P project an, a, a a part of the culture of Fitch High School, and it starts at Groton Middle School also. All those skills that we teach that are embedded in the classroom are carried through, and then that final assessment is done in tenth grade. And, you know, it's just amazing to see what these kids can do. You know, they're, they're fifteen years old and they can do these amazing things. It also really, really helps special ed students because they are included in this whole project. They can pick their level, and the special ed teachers help them as a resource to move through. So it's just, to me, real, a good assessment of learning how to learn. And I think the next slides go to Jessica Dunnekin, who has done amazing job so far with this.
Hi there. Jess Dunnekin, English Department Head, and one of the Personal Project Coordinators with Chris Morse, and he can unmute and jump in too. So how we kind of have reworked this a little bit this year is that the Global Citizenship Teacher is there, the supervisor for the personal project. The teacher is only required to check in three times with their students using what's called an academic honesty form, which we're gonna show you shortly. And the A T L skills, as Kathy mentioned, and the I B learner profile. And just to go over what those are really quickly, um, they directly connect with the original plan for that Senior Capstone project that was a state requirement. Thinking, social communication, self-management, and research skills are our A T L skills. And then I B is just looking to create enquirers, knowledgeable thinkers, communicators, you know, so on and so forth. So all of those A T L skills that they've been, that have been embedded across the M Y P curriculum in their sixth through tenth grade courses. So English, Social Studies, Math, all of those courses in sixth through tenth grade include those skills and traits. So this is pretty much just to have the students create something that really shows their ability with all of those skills. I already mentioned this. Just to keep in mind, because this is a, a portion of the Global Citizenship Class, these prompts run concurrently with the Global Citizenship Curriculum. So another thing that we'll show you shortly is the timeline of how these things happen simultaneously. And we hope that the supervisor slash Global Citizenship Teacher is spending the majority of their time on Global Citizenship Curriculum, and is merely there just to prompt the students to move forward with their independent project. So it is, it is an independent thing from the Global Citizenship Course. Go ahead, thank you. This is just a quick rundown of what is expected of the students. They go over a project proposal, and the supervisor will approve of it. Chris and I earlier this week visited the Global Citizenship Classes, and it was really beneficial to make sure that both him and myself were able to give our approval as well and talk the students through the process of what a meaningful topic and goal looks like. The students will keep track of their progress in what's called a process journal. Prompts for each of those entries have been provided to the Global Citizenship Teachers, and they will provide them to the students as well. But again, it's not the supervisor slash Global Citizenship's teacher, I'm so sorry, Global Citizenship Teacher's responsibility to make sure that that process journal is being kept appropriately. They are only there to provide the prompts. The final product and public presentation will occur at our expo on creating their final product or whatever their goal is. Sometimes it's a tangible thing you can hold in your hands. Sometimes it's a fundraiser. Most of our students do create something tangible that they can bring in with them to the expo. And keeping track of that process is what they do in their process journal, in the reflections and harnessing really their self-reflective skills, and how can they adjust based off of maybe struggles that they've had. And that's maybe my favorite part about this project is that to struggle is okay, and that's one of the goals of the project, is to have them identify these places where they might struggle and adjust accordingly. You can go to the next slide. All right, Chris, do you wanna give a quick rundown about the, the first form there that we have the supervisors do?
Yeah, so the academic honesty form is, we're gonna, we're asking kids to engage in research. We're asking them to do it independently. So we're also looking for them to hook up with a supervisor, someone who's going to oversee them, and just kind of check in with them and make sure that they're actually, that they're actually doing it, so that they know that someone's keeping eyes on them. So there's an academic honesty form that they have to sign, and they work with their supervisor. And their supervisor does regular check-ins with them to make sure that they're the ones who are actually doing the research, they're doing the work. They're not outsourcing it to some, you know, A I somewhere.
Can we click on that form really quickly? I think it's important to see, to kind of show the, the difference between Global Citizenship and this academic honesty form. The role as the Global Citizenship Teacher is not going to be overwhelmed by their involvement as the supervisor. So this is just a one-page form that the supervisor and student will have access to. Pretty basic information at the top, if you scroll down just a little bit, please. So the purpose of this document is just to record their three required meetings. Typically, what will happen is meeting one, they will have a topic approval meeting and set some goals for the future of how the student can achieve that. Meeting two is where they will check in during the process of the student creating the product. And then meeting three, which is on the back page, is typically maybe a couple of weeks before we have the expo, assuming that their product and process journal are pretty much done. And the supervisor has space for comments, and everybody signs it to say, yes, this is my own work, and yes, I met with a supervisor through the process. And something that we tweaked a little bit this year, but we did have last year, was this goal-setting worksheet. Could you click on that, please? I think this may be one of the most beneficial things that we've done. The students were struggling to come up with appropriate topics and things that were meaningful and rigorous. So here, you're gonna see some fill-in blanks. So to learn more about blank, your topic, they plan to create a blank, a product, to better understand blank, blank, and blank. Usually, it's a few researchable takeaways. And then in order to come up with part two, sometimes the student has to, you know, go to the internet and do a little bit of basic research to see where they can find help. So outside of their supervisor, it's recommended by I B that our M Y P Personal Project students try to find an expert in the field, or who you might call like a mentor. And it's nice because that doesn't put the load on the supervisor to be an expert in the field. They are merely just someone to check in and make sure that the student is on track with their own, the goals that they've set for themselves. So some examples that we have here for our basketball lovers to learn more about basketball, I plan to create a fall conditioning program and schedule to better understand the human body and physical endurance. So I think that we can all see that there's a topic, basketball, cool. That's usually where we start with the students. They tell us something that they're interested in, and we guide them to creating, you know, the more intricate parts of their goal. And what could they research to better understand those things and have a well-rounded approach to actually creating this project? Second example, to learn more about cooking, I plan to create a family meal plan and recipe guide to, sorry, to better understand how to buy and prepare nutritious foods. I wanna note the part two of this one, to learn more about my topic and create my product, I'll need to look at household budgeting sites, cookbooks, and grocery store flyers. What we try to have the students do for part two is really think outside of their, you know, egotistical viewpoint that they have, that they know everything and they could just do this. So where can we look for help is a lot of what this project's about. And then the last example that we have here, to learn more about global warming, I plan to create a brochure offering recycling slash trash collection advice for Groton citizens to better understand the local government's role in protecting the environment. I think a lot of this, for me, why I love this project, is because it can get the students out into the community and feeling like they're a part of something a little bit bigger than themselves. And that is something that's fantastic about it. So we're all set with the goal-setting worksheet. Does anybody have any questions before we keep going with this, or do you want me to just keep going? All right, good. On the M Y P.
Wait, 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 wait.
Sorry. Well, there you are.
Have to find my hand. There we go. Okay. So this advisor or teacher is somebody at the school. It's not in, like, Switzerland or someplace in the world. It's somebody at school, correct?
Yes, it is somebody at school. So this year, we are having the Global Citizenship Teachers who have anywhere from, you know, ten to twenty-ish kids in a class, be the supervisor for those students. This class runs first semester and second semester. So this year, we'll be having an expo in the fall for our first semester students in November. And then we'll be having one in the spring as well in March for our second semester students.
So this teacher is assigned a class of twenty-ish.
Yeah.
And the teacher's job is to assess three times for each child where they are and where they're going.
They don't have to assess necessarily. They're just going to do a quick check-in. Usually, for me, when I've been a personal project supervisor, these meetings range anywhere from five to fifteen minutes. And they don't have to do this on a particular day. They can be spread out throughout, you know, a couple of weeks of time. But depending on where the students are, depends on how much time needs to be put into those meetings.
So that's it for what the teacher's doing.
I'm sorry?
That's it for what the teacher is doing. There's no class, they're not teaching anything. That's it for what the teacher is doing. There's no class. They're not teaching anything. They're listening to the child tell the process or and the progress.
For, for just their role as the personal project supervisor, they're doing other things concurrently with this. But global citizenship curriculum is the overwhelming majority.
They have, they have another class, Dr. Ackerman. They, they, this is part of their class, but it's a very small part because the kid is supposed to be very independent. But global citizenship is a class.
Oh, I see. And there is curriculum for that, correct?
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
All right. What I was picturing was not what you just said. Okay.
Let me actually give you the rundown of what the schedule would look like that's been provided to the teachers. I actually happen to have written the global citizenship curriculum also. So we, can you click on the personal project schedule, please? Okay, you can scroll down. We'll take a look at what's expected for the first few weeks. I don't want you to get overwhelmed by the fact that what's on the right-hand side is larger than what's on the left-hand side. There are units, long lengthy units in the global citizenship curriculum that describe what they should be doing for each.
Can you enlarge these or no? Oh, thank.
Okay, so for example, up at the top, you'll see they have an intro unit and then they get into a cultural awareness unit. And all of that is happening in global citizenship class regardless of what's happening with this personal project. But we've given them very specific prompts to provide the students with and templates and sample process journal pages so that the kid knows exactly what is expected of them. And it should be a quick, easy, make a copy of this document, change the file name and take the teacher less than 10 minutes to get the student to accomplish this particular task. You can scroll down a little bit so we can look at some other examples. So while they're still in that cultural awareness, they do that goal-setting worksheet that we showed you. But Chris and I went into those global citizenship classes and ran those lessons. For example, on September 29th-ish, they're going to be moving into their social justice equity and human rights unit and global citizenship. But what they should be doing, the supervisors, is doing one quick process journal check with the supervisor. And the kids will be told, all right, you should be about on entry number five, where you record your early research findings and next steps. The teacher's not required to provide them any time during class to do those. But we've asked that the teachers share these journal prompts with the kids. And a lot of our teachers are using SchoolG to share these with their students. We've also given like a rough estimate of when they should be doing their first official entry or whatnot with the students. And keep scrolling down a little bit. To keep them on track, we've simply said, begin your product development. Entry number eight, you should add some photos and notes of your first steps to your journal, your process journal. So again, what's happening on the left-hand side has its whole own curriculum. It's an entire class, it's global citizenship. What's happening on the right-hand side are merely prompts that will be given to the students. Just to keep them on track. So, I mean, the last couple of weeks before the expo will be devoted to the personal project to make sure that the students are ready to hand in a final written report. They're ready to have a tri-board displaying some information that's in their written report and just more of a visual creation so that they can show their self-reflective process. And then we have the expo on November 17th, I believe.
Okay. The written report has some strenuous or rigorous guidelines also, correct?
Yeah, I'm gonna go over that in just a second.
Okay, just making sure that they know that.
Yeah. Okay, the personal project process journal, please. So this is a template that was new this year. I think it's super duper helpful, especially since the students, they're not doing this in class. They have a copy of this and every time they're prompted to do a journal entry, they can simply just change the things at the top. Click off little boxes saying what phase they are in and then also keep track of their ATL skills. It's pretty much a fill-in-the-blank situation. If you scroll down a little bit, there's further explanation about the ATL skills. So if a student is working on social skills, they'll check any of those boxes that apply and explain it. They're not going to be working on these every time they do a journal entry, so they get to pick and choose which ones fit that particular entry. I believe we have about 10 total journal entries, which would put the students at a process journal that's going to be, you know, anywhere from 15 to 20 pages long. It'll include image, images and evidence. They'll describe some challenges and solutions. And all of these things occur every single time they do a journal entry. They have to keep track of these. Okay, and to go on to the next document that's linked up there, this is gonna speak to what Kathy was just discussing, the final written report. We don't have to provide the students with a final written report template. We don't have to give them that goal-setting template. We don't have to give them any of these templates according to IB. However, in my training this summer, I did ask for some clarification, personal project training on whether or not this was acceptable and okay. And they said absolutely 100%. And there were, the overwhelming majority said that they wish they could have it as a graduation requirement at their school. Because it really does entice students to complete the project and do a good job. Okay, so the final written report is one of the culminating things that they have to create based off of their process journal and their experiences. Section one is all about their planning. And section two, they explain how they have applied those skills. And I hope you can see the correlation between this and the process journal template that I just showed you. They can pretty much pull directly from their process journal in order to write this final written report. When they're done with it, it becomes this lengthy report that they didn't know that they could do. And section three, we have the time for them to reflect. My favorite, absolute favorite part, especially when I get to see how they turn those words in this written report into something on their tri-board. Then section four of the written report, it is required that the students include some sort of visual evidence of what was attained. And then lastly, an MLA works cited page is required as well. We can look at the personal product supervisor handbook. It's very basic. I think what I just went over with you is much more detailed than what this is. But you can see the table of contents. It pretty much just explains what the personal project is that Kathy explained earlier. What their roles and responsibilities are as a supervisor, what the timeline looks like. Key stages, academic honesty form, rubrics, which we can look at right now, actually. Hopefully we're in there. Really trying to think about whether or not I've attached the rubric here. There it is. Yay. Look at me go. All right. Okay, so we have a few different criterion. This looks a lot like any IB rubric. If you've ever seen them, one will be about their planning stages. And scroll down just a little bit. So the student can get a maximum number of points of eight. Obviously, that's what we're shooting for. You know, if our students land around a five or six, that's also not, not horrible. Let me scroll down. Then they talk about how they have, or sorry, we read them based on how they have applied those ATL skills. And obviously, that's indicated through their written report and their tri-board presentation. And then we have criterion C, which is their reflection, which is a part of the written report. This is gonna be the first year and Kathy correction, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is gonna be the first year that these projects are scored and, and sent off to IB. So we are in the baby stages of NYPD still. And now this year, we're moving up to like toddler stage. So this is going to be, this is gonna have a, an impact on them that this grade will be recorded. We can back out of the rubric. Thank you. Before we get into how we can see things similar to the NYPD personal project, well, actually, the personal project. Just, I want to note that this is a requirement from the IB NYPD program that the students complete this project. If we were to not have this project, the, the students have the opportunity through IB to take assessments. Those assessments cost money. If we were to assess every single student in the 10th grade, they'd be having exams in all of their NYPD courses through the IB NYPD program. This project fulfills that requirement of an assessment through the NYPD NYPD program. So I just want to note that.
And before we move on, I just want to like talk just quickly, like wax philosophic about this for a second. One of the reasons I got involved with the personal project is two years ago, Anne Keefe-Frabotnick put on the first one and I went to the expo and I thought it was really neat. And it was, as I was, all things IB and all things teaching, I think about what would I want my own children to do? Like my kids are all in Grotton Public Schools and I'm thinking about what are they gonna do as they go through middle school and high school? And as I was standing in that expo two years ago, I'm like, I want my kids to do stuff like this. I want them to be able to pursue these passion projects, go out there and research them and then share them. Cause what a lot of our kids do is they're choosing things that they're interested in. And maybe they do some research on their own, like they watch some YouTube videos, they read some articles, they, you know, watch TikTok videos about it. But no one ever pushes them to that next, that next step. No one ever has them create a product about what they've learned. They, so they're internalizing this knowledge, but they're never actually sharing it with anybody. That's what I think the real strength of the NYPD personal project is, is that we're, we're pushing them to take that next step that they didn't even know that they wanted to take. And so a lot of the kids maybe drag their feet when they first start this process. But by the end of it, when you go, the IB expo is such a cool thing, when you get to see, you know, 100, 200 Fitch students talking excitedly about their projects and what they created and what they learned. And there's a sense of pride there that is, is pretty, pretty impressive. And then it also further prepares them for a lot of our kids, you know, hopefully are going on to the diploma or now our career-related program. Where they're gonna do the extended essay or the reflective project, which is the next level. Like we're really taking something that you are interested in, that you're passionate about, and how can you turn that into something even bigger? And those are the parts, I mean, those of you who are there for, when I did the diploma program presentation last year, when the students who had gone through the DP went on to college, the extended essay is something they spoke very, very highly about. And I think the personal project is a great, it's like that with training wheels. It's a great first step for kids to do something truly independent for the first time, but also have some guidance and some guardrails along the way. That's my soapbox.
Okay, so one of the things that I was asked to talk about is what some of the other IB schools do here in Connecticut regarding this requirement. And I'm fortunate enough to have worked in two other districts that have IB schools. And so I can talk a little bit about, you know, what I know that they do. So the first district that, or one of the last, my most recent district that I worked in was East Hartford Public Schools. And they do have an IB pathway. They have a, an elementary school that has the primary years program. School, students advance from, most, most students choose to advance from their primary years program to their middle years program. It gets a little tricky when they go from the middle years program to the diploma program because not all students are able to. There's, their middle school Sunset Ridge has about 350 students and only 50 students get to advance from the middle years program to, to the Connecticut IB Academy. And that's because the Connecticut IB Academy brings in students, it's a, it's a resco lottery school. And it brings in students from not just East Hartford, but from a variety of school districts in the greater Hartford area. And students have to apply to attend. But I can tell you that students complete, because of that, students complete the personal project in the eighth grade rather than in the 10th grade. So they do things a little differently in East Hartford regarding this requirement. But I can tell, talk to you a little bit about what happens. Students in the eighth grade identify an inquiry statement based on their learning in middle school. They conduct research and they complete a service-based learning project. And they present it, their project in an expo-style format, similar to what the students at Fitch do. They receive feedback from those in attendance at the expo style, at the expo. And I happen to be one of those attendees every single year that was required to give feedback to the students. And then the students reflect on that experience. Because they complete this project in middle schools, the students obviously do not receive credit toward graduation for this, for this project that they complete. But I can tell you that this is a very powerful experience for the eighth graders that complete this project. And many of the, well, nearly all the students that go to Sunset Ridge do apply to attend the Connecticut IB Academy. Again, unfortunately, only a very limited number of students then go on to attend Sunset Ridge. But really, that's because of the lottery requirements. But they do have great experience at Sunset Ridge. The second school district that I was a part of that has an IB school is Crick Magnet Schools. And Crick has an IB pathway as well. They have an elementary IB school and a middle years program that is kind of combined with a DP. And that's their Academy of International Studies. Students attend that school between grades six and 12. So it's one school combined that has all of those children in, in the same building. And the students there do two separate projects. In grade 10, students complete a much smaller project as a part of their, with, what I would translate to be a civics class. Students complete an extended service learning project, but it's usually as a part of a small group, either two or three students. And it's, and it's really designed to be almost like the personal project, but like a, a smaller experience. It prepares them for the personal project. It requires students to work in a small group to conduct a research presentation. And they complete a self-reflection and an evaluation. It's based on something that they've studied during that civics class. The project is graded, but it's incorporated into their report card as a part of that class. Then in the 12th grade, they build upon this experience. They complete an independent project. It is their capstone project. It's scored using their students' expectations for student learning rubric. Students work with an advisor, similar to what we do here at Fitch inside the school. Some of them also, depending upon what their project is, they seek out the invited, guidance of a community member. So they have an inside, what I, what I used to call like an inside school advisor and an outside of school advisor that provides them with guidance on this capstone project. Their project is presented to a public audience. They do not do it as an expo format, so they actually have a public presentation that they give. Usually it's to their classmates and then also to a younger set. So maybe the ninth graders come or the 10th graders come to prepare them for like when they get to, they have to do their senior project presentation. Student, and then also members from the community come. So we'll, at the time, I say we, because I was the senior project coordinator. But we would invite, you know, members of the, of the community, meaning local businesses. We would also invite other Crick Magnet Schools. It would be a variety of people that would be invited to attend. Students have to reflect on the experience and, and for me, that was actually the best part of the experience. Because they would also, I mean, almost to a, to a student, they would always say, I, they would say, they would always start by saying, I really did not want to do this capstone. I was almost dreading doing this from the time I started this school in the sixth grade. Because they were like a little bit anxious about it. But, uh, they would always say, this was such a positive experience for me because I learned so much during it. And these students all received one credit toward graduation. They did not do this as a part of a class. They did a, they had to actually receive, they did a proposal and they received approval for a proposal for their, uh, project proposal during the 11th grade. But they had independent time to complete it during their 12th grade year. So it's pretty similar to the design of the Fitch program. Oops, I'm sorry. Did not mean to do that. Okay. With all of the things said here, this is the end of our formal presentation. Hopefully, I'm going to just go back a couple of slides. Hopefully you're able to see with all of the presentation, or I mean, all of the information that we've presented today. That the elements that are incorporated into, um, into the fit, the current Fitch. Design model, um, really kind of mirror. The original intent of, um, or the original design, um, way back in, I think we said like 2007. When, um, when the captain, when the people started kind of looking at this original. The original committee started looking at designing this project, you know, looking at a self-directed project based on students' personal interests. And, um, looking at, you know, the school's core values and applying their knowledge and skills. But, you know, with that said, I think that any of us would be willing to, um, take questions from, uh, from our board members.
Right, Mike or Andrea, do you have any questions?
Well. You want me to raise my hand?
No, no, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, good, because I can't find it. Okay, um, I, I guess the question is again about. I'm, I'm still unclear about. How this is, is set up in the high school. So what I think I'm hearing is that, that there are more than one teacher that. Is part of, uh. The staff that oversees this, that, because you said there's a, the eight, there are classes of 20. So there must be, how many classes are there? That, how many?
Eight sections of global citizenship that we went to visit, Jess?
Seven or eight, yeah, this semester and then another set of those students next semester. Um, and that's, would you mind, would you mind stopping the screen chair just so I could like see everybody right now? My computer is limiting me to five people and it, thank you.
So, so that's it. At, at Fitch, there are that many classes doing this, yes. So.
It's the entire sophomore class. Over two semesters.
How do the, do the teachers get together and talk about? You know, the expectations, because I might have expectations as Kathy could tell you. And Adrian might have a different point of view. Or is that the, the point of this project that different teachers bring different thoughts on how this should go?
Well, Jess and Chris have been spearheading this whole thing. So as they, as Jess created the global citizenship class over the summer and has done it in the past also. They did all of the forms. Everything is really succinct and, um, set up so that pretty much this here, those teachers have a template to run by.
That's it in terms of, of what's on the paper. But what's in the teacher's head in terms of expectations for a child?
Can I just jump in just for how, Dr. Ackerman? I, I, I just, I'm always here to support, um, uh, IB and Jess and Chris and Kathy. Especially when it comes to global citizenship and, uh, NYPD. And I am the administrator that has partnered with Jess and Chris and Kathy when it comes to this. So even in past practices and currently, um, Jess, Chris, uh, Kathy and I have met with the global citizenship teachers. And gone over the curriculum and gone over the expectations. And, um, when as needed, you know, we probably will need to meet another time just to make sure that everyone's on the same page. But as the supervising administrator, I will be visiting those classes to make sure. That everyone is following the curriculum and the expectations as dictated by the curriculum. And as we discuss in those cohort meetings.
Okay, so the, do the, I know that the three of you. And then respond to you, Carmine, but the three of you have an idea, but do the teachers themselves get together and talk?
Yeah, so we've. We've been encouraging the global citizenship teachers to, um, share any materials they came up with, any feedback about the curriculum even. But, I mean, the number of emails that both Chris and myself field every day from them. Would show that they are asking questions to make sure that they are doing the right thing. Um, and I would say that every single one of them has reached out just to check in and, you know, be certain that. How they're doing it is the right way. But it's, it's pretty prescriptive, um, and not, shouldn't be super time consuming for them.
I just have one more question and then I'll stop. But do they talk to each other? They talk to you, do they talk to each other?
I would hope so. As an interdisciplinary course, global citizenship is, um, not falling into a particular department. But I guess if they had to have a go-to person to talk to, it would be Carmita and then myself. Um, to, to have a centralized understanding. But we have provided time for them to have meetings.
Dr. Ackerman, it's just like any other course, we might have, um, you might have five teachers that teach English 10 and you would hope that they, um, they talk to one another. But, um, if they don't have common planning time, you can't, um, you can't enforce that.
And that was my question, thank you. You answered.
So in the, in the past though, Dr. Ackerman, we have, um, the global citizenship teachers during our TLI days or PD days. When we have that collaborative time, typically what we do for the global citizenship teachers is set up a small amount of time. That's not detracting from whatever department they are a part of. So, I mean, these meetings are, meetings amongst the global citizenship teachers have taken place in the past throughout the year. And we've, you know, we're only a few weeks in this year and we've had, um, meetings as a whole group. And then with Chris and myself, meeting with each individual teacher.
Okay, thank you.
Mike?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, thank you for the presentations and the, the explanations too, as well as the context, both from the middle years program, IB program and also from different schools. One question I had was, um, the project itself. It, is there a credit or half a credit associated with that? Separate from global citizenship? And then does it appear somewhere on the transcript? And if so, how?
I can speak to that, I guess. The global citizenship class is a half a credit, a half a year course. Um, just like any other class that they would take, it's an interdisciplinary, um, study that they do. And, um. The, um, sorry, the personal project is also a half a credit that they receive for its completion. Um, they are not graded on their transcript for this personal project is simply a point five credit pass fail, um, situation. But both will show up on their, um, on their transcript. Completing what is a requirement at Fitch High School is still currently the mastery-based diploma, um, requirement. That's still a Fitch High School requirement, um, currently in our program of study. So once they do both the global citizenship class and earn their point five credit for the personal project. They achieve that one credit worth of mastery-based diploma learning.
Thank you, my, my connection hung up a little bit there. Uh, so the, the project itself is, uh, counts for one credit, is that correct?
Point five credits.
Oh, and then so between the global citizenship and the, and then the project that totals one, is that, that's what you're saying, I guess?
Yes.
Great, um, and I can see the big advantages of having it done within a classroom context of, of global citizenship. Is there anything like from IB standards or from the state that says that, um, like global citizenship itself, um, is required? I see the value in the, the, the class, I'm just trying to get that, like, is it required context? And if so, how?
So what Avery was explaining a little bit earlier is that they just recently have, um, the state, sorry, not just saying. The state has, um, retracted that requirement, um, but we still have that in our program of studies for Fitch High School. Because it was super recently that this occurred. Um, and the, um, the project is a requirement from IB, the NYPD program that the students completed.
So that's the project, but what about the class? The global citizenship class, that's what I wasn't clear on.
Global citizenship is not part of an IB requirement. I wasn't there when it started, my assumption is that it was created at Fitch High School to help fulfill that mastery-based diploma requirement. But it is not tied to the, the personal project needs to be done for IB. Global citizenship is a, a separate entity.
Initially.
Go ahead, Carmine.
I was going to say initially, when I taught global citizenship, the purpose, what the purpose of global citizenship was to complete the NYPD project. But the understanding, uh, IB has changed the requirements that no longer can the personal project be done in class. It has to be done independently. So.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna.
Yep.
Hang up that thing.
Just to continue with what Carmito is saying, um, I don't know if, um, the board members are aware, but, um. Five to 10 years ago, we also had a freshman academic seminar class, which was something that, um, having that interdisciplinary course also came down from the state. Um, and what we ended up doing was combining what was being taught in freshman academic seminar. Into our global citizenship course and revamping the global citizenship course to be more, um, impactful and effective. Um, and more in line with what our NYPD curriculum was. So this has been like a, a big transformation over time. And this year I would say is probably about as close to like streamlined as we've been with both the project and with the global citizenship course. Being useful, um, and a, a time for the teachers also. I, I mean, what a nice thing, what a beautiful curriculum to work off of, I do say so myself. But everything is there for them and all of these teachers have taught, most of them, sorry, except for one, have taught this class before. So they're familiar with this type of material, they're familiar with this, um, type of teaching and learning. And it should be a comfortable place for them. Um, and allowing the students kind of a little bit of a, all right, now I'm focusing on all the things. Not in a stressful kind of way, but just like, how do I actually apply this to real life? All of these skills that I'm learning explicitly in my other classes. The global citizenship allows for that.
And I just want to add, don't forget that students have nine credits that they have to earn in the humanities, several of which are elective-based credits. So global citizenship would fall under that credit requirement.
Thank you, and I want to underscore, I really do see the value of it. It's a, it's a nice pairing with, uh, sort of that career pathways or, or getting ready for college. Cause this is a, a sort of individual expression, uh, individual, uh, you know, just exploring something that you want to on your own. And it's sort of a structured and informed way. Uh, so that's really valuable. My other question was, I, I believe that if someone's in naval sciences one, uh, then they don't have to, um, do the, the project. Because presumably they have something similar that they're doing, or maybe it conflicts schedule wise. So wondering if you could speak to that, if maybe I understand is correct on that, or if it's off.
That is correct, that if a student is in, in the naval science class, that has counted for their mastery-based diploma. Taking the naval science courses does eat up a lot of room in their schedule as well. So I assume that probably, I, I can't speak from the counseling point of view, but it probably makes it difficult for them to get into the global citizenship class. And a lot of what, uh, Mr. Henkel does with them is very similar skills that we're working on in the, uh, NYPD personal project and global citizenship classes.
Got it, thank you. And then from the IB perspective, is there like a certain percent of students that have to complete, um, uh, middle year project? Or I, I guess what I'm asking is if the naval sciences grows, does that endanger us like fulfilling the IB, uh, objectives? Or does the naval sciences part count into IB as well?
Jess, did they talk about that at all in your training? I can't. I can't think of, I can't think of anything that would cause a problem with that.
Uh, I can't think of it either, and I actually would check into that, but, um. It's, they, they're very compatible.
So someone completing the naval sciences in terms of IP, it's, it's counting for that? Or is it just off, off the IP books?
It's really, it's, that would be off the IB books.
Okay, thanks. Does IB have like a threshold, like 80% of students, students have to do this to still like be conforming with the middle years program or to IB? Or, or maybe they don't, they just have to offer it?
They want 100%, of course, we all want 100%, but, I mean, in reality, I don't. I'm not sure if they do have a threshold. I think they just push for the 100% and then, I mean, this is the first year that we're going to actually submit sample work, register all the students. You know, it's been a grow, a growth, um. Thing for us, so we'll see. We'll ask those questions, those are great questions.
I'm sorry, I don't know the actual number and I, I don't recall that from June, I'm discussing that at my training. Um, but, um, Chris and I were able to, and Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm, this is not 100% accurate math. But I would say upwards of 90% of our students last year completed the personal, excuse me, completed the personal project. Um, and the other 10%, we hope to get a whole bunch of them to complete it this year. It's a graduation requirement, so they have to do it. Um, so those 11th graders who didn't complete it last year are going to be tasked with completing it this year. Um, so, I mean, we shoot for 100% all the time and I don't remember them discussing any, um, mandatory percentage to reach to stay within like compliance or something.
But the growth is incredible. I mean, the, we started this three years ago because NYPD started in 2018. We were going through the training, the planning process, COVID hit, so then we were re-capping everything and trying to get it all back on board. And the first year that the personal project was done, there was 26 children, 26 students completed the project. And then it just, I mean, 171 completed it last year, or 179 or something like that. It was, it was phenomenal. So, I mean, the, the work that these guys have done at the high school with these kids. Um, and getting the message out and getting, and getting teachers on board, it's amazing and, uh, and the projects are amazing.
Yeah, thanks, I've, I've actually seen the, uh, some of the results and they're impressive. So, so it's grown quite a bit and that's all, does it hold up anyone from graduation typically? Or, I mean, I, I thought they'd have to complete it by the end of the global citizenship class, but it sounds like they, you know, keep working on it if they need to.
Even, even into, well, the hope is that everyone finishes it before the end of the 11th grade year. So, but we, we as an admin team have, um, uh, have something in mind for them, for those seniors who have not yet completing it. Including, uh, ensuring that they complete it during their off lock. But it is going to be a graduation requirement.
Okay, great, and so, so it's not like they're, you know, the expo you said was like mid-October, it's not like they're, uh, sophomores trying to complete it between. You know, that part of the semester, they're, 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 they're launching, they're using the, um, global sisters collapse as a launching point. And then it goes on from there.
Our, our first semester global citizenship students. Our our first semester global citizenship students will complete this project before November seventeenth. The ones that are enrolled in global citizenship during this first semester. Our second semester students will complete it um before March seven.
April, April sixth.
Yeah, sorry. Um, but they'll have the same amount of time. Um, and like we said, this is supposed to be an independent project um, outside of school hours, creating their product. Um, the school is just supposed to be checking in with them and making sure that they are on track. That's our role as supervisors and or global citizenship teachers' roles as supervisors, and then Chris and I as the personal project coordinators.
Thank you, but that's not an actual like hard deadline, so if students do need more time, like do it next year or something, that sounds like that has happened.
It has happened, but we we do not offer that to students. Um, something that we do offer, if we want to talk about special ed real quick, is to have a little bit of extended time with the project. Um, so if we have a special education student who needs extra time, um, just generally speaking, um, they are allowed to present during the spring um expo, and they will start work with their um case manager, with their para, if they have one, um, they the whole entire special education department has been informed of this project, so they know what the expectations are. Um, so if a student does need a little extra time, they can present during the spring expo.
Uh, thank you very, very much for explaining that. That's all my questions.
Thank you.
I I've got a few as well. Um, so it seems like a great um curriculum, and it seems like it's very comprehensive. Uh, my question is staffing. Um, so I'm guessing uh the a teacher that teaches global citizenship might have a hundred students, correct, or something like that? Um, and if they've got to check in for an average of ten minutes every three weeks with a hundred different kids, it's it seems like that's a lot of time. I mean, you can correct me if I'm wrong, and maybe maybe global citizenship is spread out through more staff members than that, but.
Yeah, it's spread like, I don't think anyone has more than two sections of global citizenship right now, so um, I think but with the the class size, I think most of the, what is it? I think there's five or six teachers who have global citizenship. They probably have between fifteen and thirty students each.
Alright, so they can, so how does your staff feel about adding the workload of global citizenship? I mean, of the personal project into global citizenship? So if you, do the teachers feel like they have enough time um to get through all that effectively, like all of those responsibilities?
Honestly, I think that's still yet to play out, but I will say that the global citizenship curriculum um that I revamped over the summer was a pared-down version of our the existing or pre-existing global citizenship curriculum. Um, and the amount of time that I have laid out in that timeline that I showed you with the two things running side by side. Um, having taught global citizenship, having been the personal project coordinator, I tried to be mindful of the fact that maybe one day, you know, in these lessons, they are going to be focusing on the personal project and checking in with those kids, and their other students are going to be working on global citizenship work while they check in. So while the teachers checking in, just like when we have writing conferences or anything of the sort, um, the other students will have work that they are completing. So the, it shouldn't be overwhelming to have three check-ins with less than thirty students probably throughout a semester course. I I I wouldn't think that's overwhelming. We haven't heard any complaints as of yet. Um, but like I said, you know, it's only September eighteenth, and this model is, this is the first time that we've done it this way.
Yeah, it, to me, um, you know, it seems um much more intensive than than what I've experienced, you know, with my own kids going through it in the past. So I think this is, this is great, and it really is a a good project for the kids, and it's gonna, it's gonna help them with um, you know, with, you know, finishing high school and in college, just being able to work on things on their own. Uh, i- in my own experience, though, um, and I'm not an educator, I went to college and we had, you know, capstone project, um, you know, for my bachelor's and and um, I found that it that um, you know, the professors, you know, gave a lot of help along the way, and they didn't, certainly didn't do the project. Um, you know, and we didn't really work on it in class, but we had a class asso- associated with it. Um, because to get a, at least in my own experience, to have a quality project, it needs, you know, maybe the work gets done at home, but it would need review like as you're going. So more than just to check in, are you doing it? Maybe review and 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 an instructor spending a little bit more time and saying, have you thought about this? Or or maybe, you know, have you looked into this avenue to dig a little bit deeper into what you're talking about there? Because to me, it seems like if it's just some check-ins and in doing this work, um, the the work product at the end could be, you know, extremely variable, I guess, depending on on how much the kid wants to put into it, or the student wants to put into it, I should say.
Yeah.
I agree with you on that as far as it being variable, but also kids have, in the past, kids have reached out to other mentors. If a child was doing a uh a piano concerto and wanted to pass an exam from Berklee School of Music, he he connected with his music teacher. If another student wants to decrease his time in the four-hundred-meter dash, he connected with his coach. So it's not, these supervisors are just making sure you're staying on the timeline and continuing with the work and putting into your process journal. You can reach out to other mentors or people that you connect with to help you through these goals, which we all do. It's it's not necess- you're not necessarily gonna connect with the global citizen ti- uh teacher, citizenship teacher to do your four-hundred-meter dash goal, or your, you know, you're gonna connect with Andrea Ackerman if you want to get the MLK uh scholarship speech down. You know, you're not gonna do that with your global citizenship teacher. So you've got to reach somehow outside of the box a little bit too, for for professionals and for um people that can really help you achieve your goal.
I had a lot of those same concerns, uh, Mr. Johnson, that you had last year, because last year we didn't even have the global citizenship class. Jess and I just kind of took on this role in the middle of January and then just kind of had to figure it all out. And last year, so the kids got even less direct support last year, but last year we really encouraged them to, like Kathy was talking about, find find mentors. They could be parents, older siblings, um, people in the community, teachers to help them, and a lot of our kids proved to be to be really resourceful. And um, you know, when the expo came around in May, there were a couple of clunkers, but the projects overall were it far exceeded my expectations for something that Jess and I were really kind of putting together for the first time. So my hope is that this year with the structure of the global citizenship and someone in the school kind of keeping track of things, that our kids are going to be doing exactly what Kathy's talking about and getting that extra guidance, because you know, our global citizenship teachers are a of a motley crew of of music teachers and tech ed teachers and English teachers. So if a kid like, um, you know, she was talking about Miles Reese's project last year, that incredible architecture one, um, you know, if I was his teacher or one of it, you know, his supervisor in school, maybe not be able to help him with that, but he was reaching out to other people outside of school. So um, we're, I think that's, our hope is that that's what our kids are gonna continue to do.
Yeah, I see that being great if if uh, I mean, but we're, it's gonna, it's something like three hundred kids, right? Like between two hundred and seventy and three hundred kids a year that that are trying to get through the, or, well, I guess maybe a few few less if it's because of the um military sciences, but but it's still a lot.
I just want to give you a quick rundown of who these students have to reach out to. They have their personal project supervisor. They have Chris and myself, um, who will, we're gonna keep pushing into those classes and checking in with kids. Um, they also are gonna be having upperclassman mentors who visit their C T L classrooms, which is like a study hall. Um, so there will be mult- and all of the tenth-grade teachers and really the whole school is aware of this project, so there will be like a multitude of people checking in on them. The supervisor operates as the formal person checking in on them. Um, even if you try and recall back to the goal-setting worksheet that I showed you forty-five full minutes ago, um, it one of the things is that they should identify an expert in the community who can help them. Um, so I I think there's gonna be more people checking in than is clear on that academic um honesty form where the supervisor checks in formally. Um, but all of these other things are in place to help them succeed.
Alright, yeah, I mean, I guess, you know, it will, as long as the kids have the resources that they need. Um, and and if they don't, I mean, we should, you know, if we feel like we're not supporting them enough, obviously come back and and talk to the board about that in the future. The um, just trying to see what else. So staffing, um, and then um, separately, in this, this is really for the board members. I don't think this has come before the committee just for approval of the curriculum for global citizen, I mean, for um, for the NYPD project in general. Um, so the curriculum, it's a, it's obviously um a very broad, I mean, the curriculum is just um, you know, teaching students a process and to stick to it, um, you know, self-studying, working independently, journal. Um, so it's a very broad curriculum, but um, Andrea and Mike, do you feel that that, I mean, to me, i- I don't believe um, Anne Marie can um let me know, but I don't believe it's come before just to approve it as a, I don't know if we'd approve it as a class, but since there's credits associated with it, um, if we would approve it as a as a curriculum, so Andrea may know better than anybody on on what you think about that.
My my concern is that when I heard you describe what the state is expect expecting and overall what the expectations are, that if I were in the classroom, I I would have no idea where it's supposed to begin. So I'm glad that um what what Jess and Kathy and and Chris and Carmita have contributed tonight is that they seem to have a real handle on you know, the 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 criteria, the the, you know, uh, the expectations of the entire experience, and you seem to have it. Uh, me? If the other board members said to me, well, what do you think of that? I would have to say like, I I truly have no idea. Uh, you know, I I get that, I get the idea that that kid has to take control and oh, and it, and I'm listening to you. I still don't have a a real handle on what the classroom teacher is expecting and how they, I mean, I know you said that they can get together every once in a while on a professional day or whatever. It's so vague in my mind, but a- again, it's not vacant vague in your minds. I don't know how Emery feels about that.
I I feel like if you really got a chance to look at the documents that Chris and Jessica have cre- uh Jessica have created, they are very specific as to the goals of the program. You know, like it steps right through each section, like here's the introduction, here's how you set your goals, here is, you know, how you get your health, here is what's expected at step one, at step two, at step three. I mean, I have, I did not do the personal project, and I also didn't take the training for the personal project, but I all, I looked at what they created and I said, I think I could teach this class because and because it's a, I could teach it, I could be a health teacher and then still be a supervisor for this, for this personal project, because it's a, it is a well-mapped-out you know, systemic way of getting this project done, and the supervisor just has to be like there for the kids, because Jess and Chris have done all the paperwork and all of the planning for them at this point. And I think they're gonna find, oh, this is not that big a deal. The kids, of course, will say, this is difficult because it's work, it's rigor, it's writing, it's researching, it's communicating, it's asking questions, it's inquiry. It's everything that you need to do to be a responsible um student, a learner of of everything in the world. And uh, they just, I think they're, you're gonna be amazed by what you see. You're gonna be amazed by what you see. The teachers will have a handle on it, and they've got it all mapped out for them.
Yeah, and I and I'll take a responsibility for that, Dr. Ackerman. I was supposed to get you um this, these Google slides uh yesterday, and and we went late, uh, as you know, with the uh G E A negotiations and um and I did not have an opportunity to send them, but I will make sure as soon as we get off this call that um, I share the slides that have all of the documents attached um so that you have them and you have a chance to look them over, but um Jess and Chris have done a very thorough job of putting together these materials. Anyone could pick up these materials and teach this course and have a very thorough, I mean, and and not just teach the course, but have a very thorough understanding of what the expectations are for students that complete this project. They've done an excellent job of um, of making sure that um there are very, very clear expectations and that the uh, that the rigor in terms of um what students have to do so that it is um challenging. Uh, are are, it's, I I'm really impressed with what they put together.
I'm impressed with that, uh, with the number of students who, Kathy, I think you you had the number that started.
It was like twenty-six.
And and now.
Twenty-six that put it together, and now there was a hundred, one hundred and seventy-one, one hundred and seventy-nine, Jess. There was like, there was, it was ninety percent of the students.
And then, how did that happen? Did it, was that word among the students, or or was?
No, that happened from Jess and Chris.
I I I do believe it's the structure.
And Chris.
Yeah, the structure and expectation, yeah.
Yep, and they had, yeah, expectations, they had a plan, they had student mentors going into C T Ls. They went into C T Ls, which are the advisory period at the high school, and promoted this and said, this is what's gonna be expected of you. And you know what? It's actually gonna be fun because it's personal. It is your thing. You know, I mean, back in in high school, I would have done the four-hundred-meter dash thing. You know, my friend, my best friend Shelley would have done the art, an art show or whatever. I mean, people have their own personal interests that they want to pursue, but now we're saying to them, okay, you want to pursue it, here's how you pursue it. Here's how you set goals. Here's how you do the research. Here's how you get the mentors. Here's how you get people to help you. And this is, uh, it, you know, it's just a great learning experience, and what they did in the course of two years was amazing.
Can can I just add, Dr.? Can I just add just this point that as as an IB teacher as well, having taught IB, um, and all of us on this screen, Chris, Jess, and Kath, the the last assessment in the IB program is called an extended essay. And it mirrors exactly what the end of NYPD, uh, this writing piece does, this personal project piece is. It mimics exactly, except that is more grade-level appropriate. So the same criteria that the students are expected to address in the tenth grade are the same criteria that the students are expected to address as seniors in the IB program. Again, the NYPD project is grade-level appropriate, and it mimics what is expected as at the the culmination of the DP program.
Okay, okay. Um, and Adrian, I don't know about your question, but if the question is, would you recommend it, or uh, you know, to the board, um? Oh, you know, the other, before I finish my sentence, the other thing is, I'd like to see the the curriculum for a global, the global, um, I'm really thinking global war.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Global citizenship.
Yeah, I'd like to see that curriculum as well.
Yeah, it's it's on the website, but Jeff's, Jess could probably send you a link.
Yeah, if you would, because I'm not doing that.
Um, just as a. I think you'll like it. I think you'll like that curriculum a lot. I was looking over it today, so.
And in terms of 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 recommending, you know, if if you had just told me about this, I I would have said, get a life. But listening to Chris and Kath all and uh and Carmita and who who did I miss? You know, I mean, you've got a handle on it. I mean, I I can hear in in your voices how you convey this to the kid and cultivate it in the child, so.
I'll bring you to the exhibition. I'll come pick you up. It's amazing.
Fabulous. I I don't want to miss it. Make sure it's not on a Thursday. Is it on a Thursday?
Why? Do you get your hair done on Thursdays like Carmita used to?
Ooh, stop. Dr. Ackerman gestures.
I'm at the academy on Thursday. That's what I work on. I may be, I may be working on Friday as well, but let's see, right now, for sure, it's uh, I'm at the academy on Thursday. That's what I work on. I made me, I made me working on Friday as well, but let's see, right now for sure, it's, it's Thursday.
Well, they have the dates. I'll let you know.
Just just link the curriculum, Dr. Ackerman, so you can click on the link and there's the curriculum for the citizenship.
Thank you, thank you. And you know, you wanted to visit Carmita. Remember you said you wanted, this would be a great thing to, to visit and. And, and, and forget about recommending it to anybody. I just want to know more on my own. So if you want to come and visit and talk about.
Okay, will do.
Also, I think that through Dr. Ackerman and Adrian, if you both have a chance to look at. The global citizenship curriculum, it'll give you a better understanding, not only of the course, but also of the. The precision with which this curriculum was crafted. And it couldn't be any more like, here it is on a platter for you, global citizenship teachers. Legitimately, every single worksheet that is in there has been a part of my teaching. My experiences with it and the, I got everyone's, the global citizenship teachers feedback. Before I wrote the curriculum, rewrote the curriculum over the summer. So I really do hope you get a chance to look at that because it's very straightforward. I don't think that it's confusing, overwhelming at all. So if you put that next to the personal project supervisor role, then. In my opinion, it should be relatively easy to achieve, especially with the open lines of communication that. We have all, all the four of us have put out to them.
Jessica, I'm just going to jump in and clarify, this curriculum was just revised this summer because it's already been, it had already been. Approved as a, this course previously, correct?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yeah, global citizenship was, so we're going to say the global citizenship was not a major revision, correct? Is that? Because I think major revision comes back to the board, but just a revision. So it seems like it wasn't a major revision. There's just some modifications to, to free up some, some time.
Yeah, it was, it was not a major revision, but making sure that it was the most thorough because we knew that. Asking these teachers to be the personal product supervisors is an extra, an extra task and we knew that. And I knew that when I went into doing the revision for the curriculum. Essentially what I did, that I explained earlier, I just pared it down and I made sure that there were linked up worksheets and not just some sort of vague guidance, which is. Kind of what exists in some curriculum documents. It feels a little more vague, so the teacher can take charge of it, but this is very concise and user friendly.
Yeah, I, I think it's a great curriculum. I mean, it really, I can see you guys put a lot into it and I appreciate that. But I'm, I want to go back to the, you know, the board is, you know, like in our, in our policies, you know, the curriculum committee is supposed to approve curriculum and I don't think. As far as I know, that we've approved any kind of a curriculum so far just for this project. Since we're awarding credits and it's, and it's going to end up going towards a state requirement. Are we as a board or like a curriculum committee first and then a board, are we supposed to? To be voting on this as an accepted curriculum? And I, do you, do you have any thoughts on that, Mike?
Yeah, I'm not sure and that's, but actually I'm still, I thought I understood something and now I'm not sure I do. Is the NYPD project currently, if you're not doing naval science. It's currently required for all students, students graduating two thousand and seven or later. What, what's the current status of it?
All students six through ten are involved in an NYPD program. They are, they are being taught in that instructional. Framework. Also, the previous board approved IB, we had a five million dollar grant to introduce.
I just asked about the project, just, just the project.
The project is part of IB, so there's no curriculum to the project.
No, I'm just asking if everyone has to do it.
But it, everyone has to do it. We're trying to figure out that naval sciences thing though. That might, we might have to look into that.
So Mike, just to clarify, I think your question is everyone in grade ten with the, with the exception of the naval science students.
So, but was it a requirement for last year's grade ten?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
So I, I guess I'm not, it's great that there's a big growth from twenty six or twenty eight students. A few years ago to almost ninety percent this year or, or last year, but where, where are those missing people if it's required?
So we do have a list, the administration do have a list of students. It's not a whole, a ton of students. But there's a good chunk of students who will have to complete it before their senior year. They are going to have an option to complete it. We're going to start with that next semester. We do have a plan and I'm part of that plan, but they will have next semester and into their senior year for those who still think they can dodge completing this.
Okay.
It was from last, from this past year when we. I made the decision, yep, that this is it. And then it's this mastery base project will have to be completed by all of our students.
Was it, was it a requirement for last year's graduating?
Yes, yep, it, it was. No, not, I'm sorry, not graduating class for the last year's 10th grade class. So they will have up until their 12th year class. So no, it was not. Because I think that was during, maybe, I'm not sure if it was like. And just budding off of COVID, I'm, I'm not sure, but no, there, yeah, it wasn't. A requirement, requirement.
So is it this year's graduating class? That'd be the first year it's required for everybody or no, or next year's?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry. I'm trying to think because we had a couple of people who changed hands. And I'm thinking about last year's.
This year's graduating class, it is a graduation requirement. So Chris and I are tasked with doing, with doing something that. No other personal project coordinators had to do before and that's getting these people to complete the project. That is the goal. I can't promise you, Mike, that we won't come up with some sort of alternative to this. We don't. This is not set in stone right now and this is all new to us. And, but please trust that like this is something that administration and Chris and Kathy and I discuss with school counseling often. To try and get to the bottom of like, how can we get these students to complete these projects? First and foremost, that's the goal. And then what are we going to do in the event that they do not? Because this is, you know, unprecedented, really, the experience. So it's something that we're aware of, but it's not something that we have a one hundred percent answer to, right? The second.
Thank you. Yeah, the, the project is great and exploration is, and I really see the value in it. However, in what I do. At, at all levels, it having a student work independently and, you know, mostly independently. To put in the time and then, then have that written project at the end. That obviously could be challenging. But more than that. It might be harder for some students just because of their life situations. Just like homework is harder for some students to do because they might be working a job or something else. There's priorities that come in. So there's kind of been a move away from not, not. Get eliminating, eliminating homework, but having less of it over time. And then, so when I hear the, the rigor paired with a high level independence. That is asking a lot of the students if all of them have to do it as a requirement to graduate. So I'm concerned it's going to hold up people's graduation. I'm concerned it might be like, you know, psychologically taxing on them to do so.
Well, I think that's the nice part, having this as a sophomore requirement that we have, we have two years built in as this buffer zone that if we can get. Ninety percent of our kids to do it sophomore year, we are going to have those challenging kids, but now we've still, we've got two years. To give them support and get them there. And, you know, if it does drag on to senior year. Seniors have off block, so there's, I think there's a lot of redundancies built into the system that we're going to catch, hopefully catch everybody by the time graduation rolls around.
Yeah.
And IB estimates twenty five hours, twenty five hours to do this project over the course of a semester.
But, but the writing alone, like do they in global citizenship, are they getting writing feedback? It didn't seem like it. Because that, that's our thing to, to write an essay.
It, it is a difficult thing to write that essay, however, the template that I showed you, I think makes this a little fail proof, but. I don't, I honestly can't think of anything else that we could put into place that would help these students be successful. With completing this project at their level. And I want you to keep that in mind is that the differentiation for this project is built into its design. In that it is an independent project and we've provided an enormous amount of support compared to other. IB schools in talking with all the people at my training, there were about fifteen of us. I don't want to toot my own horn, but toot, toot, they were impressed by the level of support that we provided to our students. They complained about having a low completion rate. You know, it's. Just to give you some perspective on how we're. Pretty much doing like everything we possibly could to help every single student complete this project in the way that they are going to do it, not what. My expectations are of them, not what the rubrics expectations show you, but that they will complete this project and do it to the best of their abilities. That is the completion and that will earn them the point five credits for graduation.
Thank you. And I see it's coming from a good place. I see it's a thoughtful layered approach. Where my concerns are coming from is that. Our graduation rate through Fitch is, is lower than what I'd want to see it be and I'm concerned about. Kind of having a, a new barrier for, for some students. And then, and then a suggestion for something that might help with a little extra support is. I, I believe this is true. You can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe in junior year English classes. That there's work on like college essays or something like that, or maybe they don't call it that, but an expository essay that could work for a college essay. And so they're not just, they're not doing that independently. They're, they're getting feedback through, through English on, on the writing itself. I, I didn't see anywhere where students are getting feedback on the writing, like class time to work on it. Go back and forth. It doesn't seem like it's in global citizenship. Am I correct? It seems like that's a missing part to me.
If, so as the English department had, when we worked through the writing process with our students, that is the goal. They are trying to craft a beautifully written. Piece, whether it's expository narrative, whatever they're working on, that is the goal. The goal with the final written report is not to craft something beautiful and wonderfully written. The goal is to have them have those moments of self-reflection. Where they discuss the ATL skills and they do that in their own personal voice. They have no other goal than to share their reflective moments in that written report. You know what I'm saying? So it's, it's not a process piece. It's not something that is supposed to be beautifully written or have a drafting process. To it with a, an instructor. The written report has a different goal in mind than. Let's say an essay or a college essay, a personal narrative, some sort of expository piece, any of our English assignments. The goal with that writing is a little bit different.
Yes, I was just going to add, the rubrics reflect that too. The, the rubrics reflect the criteria of communication, a reflection. Of research. It's not, did I write a well-written thesis? Although we want a thesis. For students to start the, the whole writing process, but that's not what the, the rubric. Or the student is graded on based on the rubric. It's not a well-written thesis. It's about those ATL skills.
Thank you. Do, do they have class time in global citizenship to work on that or no?
On the written report?
Yeah.
Uh, yes, the last two weeks before the expo is kind of the home stretch where the students will have time and. The teachers have prompts guiding them on how to help the students, but. That's where they will focus on honing in their final written report and that's where they'll focus in on honing in. On their tribe or visual presentation of similar materials.
Thank you. And, and I, I assume you'll, you'll like send us the, that the globe's curriculum and then. I guess there's the middle years project curriculum too.
So I linked up the global citizenship curriculum in the chat right here, so you can open that up.
Yeah, just please send it to our email. We're not going to be able to get, I'm not going to get a chat right now.
I, I will, I will send materials. I'll send this PowerPoint and I will also send the, I mean, I'll send the Google slides and I will send. The, I have access to the curriculum.
Thank you.
The NYPD materials are also located within the global citizenship curriculum. If you're looking for a solid place that they exist.
Adrian, are we looking to approve this on Monday?
No, no. I'm just wondering if the curriculum committee is, as a, you know, as a process is supposed to approve this because there's credits being associated with it. And it's meeting a state requirement, at least right now until twenty twenty seven. You know, it's required, I, I think if we were to go back a little, a few slides, it was twenty twenty three to twenty twenty seven when we were required. To have a personal project, capstone project, correct, Anne Marie? And then that requirement's going to go away or is that not the case?
Well, at least it's, it's optional after that. It doesn't go away. It's optional.
Yeah, yeah, but, but so it's, so it's a requirement right now. But I do want to tell everyone that I really appreciate you spending almost two hours with us. And our, our. Our, you know, next meeting, I think we're going to be talking about graduation requirements. So I don't know, Mike. If part of this, and the reason Anne Marie and I talked about doing this before we did the graduation requirements. Was because this seems like it's, you know, important to understand when we get to that conversation in the next meeting. So I don't, I don't know if that. Will kind of help alleviate a little bit of the concern, Mike, that, that we'll be talking about, you know, this and other things again in a couple of weeks.
Oh, I, I found it tremendously helpful, even, even just knowing about the Carnegie credit. Associating credit with contact hours was, was, was enlightening. Though I, I think it'll avoid a lot of discussion when we talk about the broader, broader subject of required credits. So, so thank you very much.
All right.
Can I, I'm sorry, one last thing from me, but I just really quickly want to explain. So the global citizenship class, whether or not that you discuss that with the graduation requirements is fine. But the NYPD personal project through our involvement with the IB NYPD program is a requirement that our students complete that. So I just want that to be like super duper clear that we have adopted the IB NYPD program at, in Groton Public Schools. And it is a requirement that all of our students complete that project. So I just want. Everyone to know that that is a requirement outside of Fitch High School's.
Yeah, but, yeah, so the reason, the reason is, is because we're at twenty seven credits right now that, that are required in the handbook. And we're talking about lowering it. So this would, just because this is kind of a newer thing, that's why I wanted to understand this. I mean, the board may choose to leave credits where they are. I don't think, you know, the, the, the take I got from the feeling is that the board would support. Reducing the required credits, you know, from board discussion, but that's why. You know, we're talking about total, total credit requirements, I think is, is really what we're focusing on, but this is just a piece of that. So, but thank you for clarifying that and we'll make sure when it comes to vote, we'll make sure that gets clarified again.
And, and my understanding is the reason it hasn't been required before in terms of IP is, is as you said, we're. Not in the infancy stage, but in the early stages of the middle year program, even though we've had an IB program for, for a long time. So that, that. We're growing into it, I think.
Or just so I can clarify, and Kathy, Kathy can, can specify, but growing into at least implementation of this specific requirement. Is that correct, Kathy?
Yes, yes. I mean, we are an authorized NYPD school, Groton Middle School and the high school. Authorized DP school and authorized career related program school, so. We, we want to hang on to our authorization and. And every year is a growing year. You can, we're, we're going to evaluation in twenty twenty seven. And they will give us feedback. They don't want to lose us as an IB school, so they're going to give us feedback. And we'll take that feedback and we'll grow more from there.
Is that your personal project?
That's my personal project. That's my personal project. And then I'm gonna really retire.
Never, never. Trust me, never. And this has nothing to do with anything, but Chris, I'm gonna send you an email later. It has nothing to do with this.
Okay.
All right, we'll stick on the topic.
I just want them to know that.
All right, all right. So maybe all right, so is there any more discussion on the M Y P project? All right, so so move move on. Next item is future meeting topics. I think the next one is graduation requirements in maybe a new course proposal or is that not gonna happen at this point? There might be one. All right, so that that's kind of our our next tentative plan for meeting topic. Is there any more discussion on that, on future meeting topics? Nope, all right. All right, and Andrea, you have anything to say to for us, to us?
I do. Motion to adjourn.
Second, and thank you.
All right, all right. Well, thank you all. Thank you. I appreciate it being a long night for this. Appreciate your time.
Fabulous.
All right, thank you.